This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 16, 2022. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by East Hampton Media on Chatter, Channel 193, and live streaming on their YouTube channel. All councils and participants in these meetings are gathering remotely on the executive order by Governor Baker extended to July 15, 2022, which allows us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remind mute under recognized by the president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in full speak time or the full hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham. Salem Derby.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski. Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zerrit.
President.
Please stand up for the pleasure of believing.
There's a belief, yeah.
Belieging is two sides.
United States of America and to the Republic.
Which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. You have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from March 2, March 2nd, 2022. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Is Connie not here?
I don't see her here.
Okay, okay.
She might be the phone number.
No, it's, we don't, we don't have any phone number here.
Okay, all right.
Hi.
Okay, Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Motion passes. Full speak time. This is the time for the public to participate. That is not part of the full hearing. We have three minutes for you. Please state your name and your address, and please bring your hand, and wait until I recognize you. And from the public.
I would like to speak, but someone turned off my video.
Right, let me turn it on.
Okay. Thank you. Excuse me. My name is Joan Kurtz. I live at 359 Main Street here in East Hampton. I'm the president of the Friends of the East Hampton Dog Park. I'm here tonight to ask for your support in building a dog park here in East Hampton. Our mission is to build and operate an off-leash dog park where dogs and their owners and friends have a safe, well-maintained area for recreation and socialization. We currently have over 80 families, businesses, and one counselor on our email list who receive updates on our progress with additional residents joining on a daily basis. We're looking for a viable location in the city and need your support to help us find and secure it for development. Monies are available for this project by a grant with no cost to the city. Presently, I drive over 20 minutes to the South Hadley Dog Park for a dog to be able to be off-leash in a fenced-in area. We're supporting them with our funds, which I'd rather give to our dog park. One of the many benefits of having a dog park is that it reduces troublesome behavior for the dogs. Without physical and mental stimulation, dogs can develop nuisance behavior like excessive barking, constant rough play, restlessness, anxiety, and other issues. Your social life will also improve as you build a community of dog owners. We've made many friends over at South Hadley, but we prefer to meet our friends here in our dog park. So when you hear residents talking about a dog park here in East Hampton, please show your support and help us accomplish this worthwhile project. We have a Facebook page, or you can email me at easthamptondogpark@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Can you please say your name and address? Yes, the phone number, 413-563-4198? Are you still there? Oh, she is mute. Let me see. I don't see. I don't know. Anyone else from the public? I'm sorry. I'm trying to...
Yeah, am I still on?
Now you're good. Yeah, there you go.
But I'm looking for some support from the, from the council members.
Before you ask for the council member's support, can you please use state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Maureen Pasquale, and I reside on Florence Road in East Hampton.
Thank you.
I'm also a member of the East Hampton Dog Committee, and we're looking for support for the city council members. We're looking for land to promote a dog park, to exercise our dogs, and for their socialization. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? Anyone else? Seeing none. Any communication from elected official board and committee? We have, oh wait.
Mr. President, I think we...
Yeah, I see Yaki. Yaki?
Hi, thanks so much. My name's Jackie Brusso Pereira. I live at 39 Garfield Ave here in town, and I was coming tonight to talk a bit about the Debt Free Future Act, and I know, I suspect that you'll be hearing more about that over the next few months. So the, you may or may not know that Massachusetts has the 10th highest student debt average in the whole country, and here in the Commonwealth, student debt disproportionately impacts public college students. And some of you may or may not know that my day job is working at the University of Massachusetts, and I had the opportunity to speak before the Ways and Means Committee a while back about just some of my students and the stories that, that I hear from them with their struggles to pay, to, you know, to take on lots of debt, and then how they're gonna end up taking, you know, being able to pay that back. So I didn't know if, if it would be okay just to tell a couple of stories as I know that folks are gonna be thinking about possibly supporting the Debt Free Future Act, just to, just to think about the fact that I work with lots of students who come to college, who are, many of them, first-generation college students. We have a lot of folks in town who fit the same description. They take on a lot of loans, and then they leave college, and typically, they're in a much better place to go forward and, and make a living and pay those debts back, but sometimes it just doesn't work out that way. And I don't, is there a time limit? President Gomez, I'm sorry, I don't want it, I don't want to...
Three minutes.
Say again?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. I'm gonna share with you just a couple of stories so that you can kind of understand what it is that our students are facing. So one of my students, who's a junior at UMass right now, has worked really hard to build a strong GPA after a really tough transition to college, and every semester, he's really struggled to pay for college despite being eligible for financial aid. And the gap between what his family's expected to pay and the aid he receives ends up being about $4,000 each semester, and his family doesn't really have the resources for that, so he's left looking for any kind of loan or grant or whatever he has. Last semester, he didn't even have enough money to buy the books that he needed for his classes. It's really, really stressful for these students. And then, again, as they get out afterward, they have a lot of debt to pay. So I could go on and on and tell lots and lots of stories, but I do hope that the city council will consider thinking about supporting the Debt Free Future Act. And thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Yaki. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none. Let's move to communication from elected official board and committees. We have Joe McCoy, and we have Jeff Bag, the city planner. They wanna make an introduction about the Elementary School Reuse Committee. And there you go. Who wanna start, Joe, or?
Yeah, I can start. So it's great seeing you all again. I hope someday soon in person. My name is Joe McCoy. I'm the chair of the East Hampton Elementary School Reuse Committee, and I know a lot of you have heard about this committee, and I assume that there's probably a lot of questions, you know, who we are, who created us, what's our mission, so I thought we could at least address some of that, get some of the introductions going. We are actually a mayor advisory committee, so we didn't, we're not a city council-based committee or a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee, so we were created by the mayor. We had two kind of, in my opinion, missions. One was that sort of correlate, kinda correlate, coordinate, and prioritize a bunch of data that was created during the downtown planning process in 2020. There were two or three public meetings where the public got together and they put all kinds of suggestions out of what we could do with these school buildings. So there was a lot of data collected, and so a lot of correlation and prioritization was needed. So that was part of what we've been doing. Also, it was part of, actually, my first time in city council, and I have to say, Council Kuzinski was there with me on property. We had a very small parcel of property that was surplus, and we had to create an RFP. And even at that time, for that small property creation of an RFP, maybe not for JP, but for the rest of us, was a bit of a challenge, especially in today's market with what makes a competitive RFP. You know, what is our, what, what needed to look like to hopefully be successful? So in that vein, the mayor brought on a consultant, Emily Ennis, who has a great expertise in working with RFPs and especially school building reuse RFPs, so a great skill in helping us create a draft of, you know, what a successful RFP might be. So what we've been doing the last few months is, you know, putting all this data together about what the priorities have been, have priorities changed since COVID? After COVID, you know, putting all this data together, as well as working with the council to create a draft. Now, this is not planting the city council. It's very clear in the charter that what your responsibilities are, the property subcommittee, but I think part of me remembering what it was like, starting with even a small parcel of property from ground zero, we're hoping to at least have this data, and at least some information forward for you to work as a framework, as a foundation to work with. And as I understand it, Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, the plan is, is that when this property is sent to surplus and goes to the city council, then there'll be like a report that will be handed off to you of just what we found, and you can use it, get the data from it, and do with it what you want. But the idea was to assist the city council in doing some of the groundwork and helping prioritize some of the comments that came out during the downtown planning process. We don't have them here tonight, but I do just, so you get an idea of who is on the committee and what their experience has been. As I said, Joe McCoy, city, past city councillor and city council president. We have Pat Ruff from the Council on Aging, and as I think most of you know, sort of knows basically the pulse of everything in East Hampton. Chris Korzac from the East Hampton Development Industrial Commission, so coming with some business background and some business influence as far as ideas of school reuse. Brad Riley, Council Riley, who has an incredible background in affordable and fair housing, has, has added his expertise. Tracy Harris from Historical Commission, so again, adding some historic voice to this whole process. We have two residents, Pamela Meads, you may know, an outstanding artist, local artist, so she brings an artistic perspective as far as what may, from her, her life experiences, may be a good use for these buildings. And Lauren Clark, who is also a resident in our city. So actually, again, this was, you will hear more from us. We're just sort of an advisory committee doing some of what we're hoping is the groundwork for you guys at city council when you tackle this, this big project. So at this point, I'll say, you know, if you have any questions, I'll let Jeff answer them. If you want specifically for me, please let me know, but otherwise, I'll let Jeff answer any questions. I counsel, President Gomez, if that's allowed, so go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Joe. City planner, but do you wanna add something before the opening to the council?
Sure, I would just add a little bit on timeline. So we're, you know, this is part of a concerted effort that started in 2018, and so we're really on, on track where we want it to be, which is preparing the RFP, and then we are hoping to go to school committee in April, and they will take a vote to basically declare that the properties are no longer needed for school purposes. And that'll have, you know, that'll have a date attached to it, so we don't know the exact date, but think like August. And that vote can happen, and then that will free us up to bring the, the RFP and the report to, into the city council realm. So we're hoping by, you know, these are alternative dates, but we're hoping by the end of May or early June to introduce that packet to city council, and then it'll go to your subcommittees for, for discussion. A couple of the things I just wanted to mention is that we're really piling on as many resources as we can. We've, we've seen this coming. We've been doing a lot of grant work. Emily Ennis is funded by a grant through the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. It's the same grant that funded the downtown plan. We have CPA dollars to have Valley CDC kind of helping us do what's called like fit tests for this. And then we also have mass development, which would came through the city council process, is helping us do some, some research. So we have a lot of stuff that is informing the RFP to bring to, to bring to the council. I had something else I needed to say, and I think what I did wanna preview, Joe, is okay, if it's okay, is what we're seeing is that affordable housing is sort of one of the primary objectives coming out of this working group. So I just didn't want that to be a surprise. We finished a housing production plan over the last two years, and so that is really instrumental and important for us to be looking at that. So I think with that, I'll answer any questions, or Joe can answer questions too, so thanks.
Thank you, City Planner back. Any councilor have any question? I see, Council Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess this is for Joe or Jeff. And it sounds like you guys are doing a lot of good groundwork here for us. And is there gonna be a survey or some outreach to the public to gather opinions on what the community wants to see happen in these spaces? Or is that something that's gonna happen later, or is that not part of this process? Just curious.
Jeff, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. I mean, what we, when we started this part of the process, it's a continuation of the downtown plan. So we have taken that as the survey. If you can imagine a use that someone would wanna see in those buildings, it's been captured. And this is the process to kind of move from what, what people would wanna see to what is kind of feasible, realistic, and financially feasible is, is one of the key things. You know, a couple of the things that have, have come up and kind of stayed really lodged kind of in the RFP so far is the idea of a community benefit. So it, it has really boiled down to a few, and they're kind of unique depending on the property. So, but I know one that, you know, we have talked about, and other people have talked about, is the gymnasium at Peppin. Is, has it been identified as like a resource? And the way the RFP will be brought to council, at least as a draft, is there will be evaluation criteria. So we hope that it's flexible, but then if you can bring this element, or this element, or this element to your proposal, you will rank higher. And just to clear the air, the other, the other two really high, higher priority items are a playground or park at each of the school properties, and any, any opportunity for public parking. So those three are really what this group and everyone kind of boiled down is, you know, we could try to do like a I think it's McGill Cutty's or something. There's, Portland, Oregon has like all these really cool places. They converted schools, and it's a mixed-use place with a bar and a theater, but the, the reality is that there's not gonna be enough money to fund those kinds of things. So we've kind of boiled it down, and it is something that goes to full city council for, for further agreement with that, but that's kind of the framework that we ended up with. So just to kind of, that's a quick summary, and we'll do more as this enters in the city council and goes into the subcommittee. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I think I must have asked a leading question because you nailed it, Jeff. You brought it right to where I was bringing it, which was looking at the gym, and I just wanted to remind, you know, like that that piece is, I know, a really important piece to the community. I wanted to make sure that that got captured. I literally got text this morning about the gym as our little suburban guys finished up last night, so I just wanted to make sure that that was being captured. And it sounds like the parking piece and, you know, the playground piece was also a really important part, and I think those are important pieces, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Seeing none. Thank you, City Planner back, and Joe, JP?
I just wanted to say thank you so much, Joe, for you and your, your work and for the committee's work. I look forward to receiving all the information and all the reports that you develop, and I think all of the councillors would, as soon as you have data or material available. I know there's lots of videos that we can watch. Lot, you know, but that, that, that can be really a long time. So I think your summarizations, your, your, your abstracts, your kind of decision-making, I think the more you can share with us, the sooner you can share with us. I think we'll have a, a better chance to begin to continue to wrap our heads around, and I, and I, and I think you've, as you said, the full census of possibilities for the buildings, and then hone them down to what really, really is, is possible and feasible. Although, Jeff, I do love hearing about other communities and what they've done, and having us be on the cutting edge of, of what, what really can be done. And I really think the reuse of the gymnasium is gonna be important. The playgrounds or little park, public parking, I, I think you've identified the issues, the affordable housing. So I look forward to any grants that, Jeff, you can continue to work on as you see these possibilities gelling together for our community. But I just wanted to say thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Kuzinski. City Planner back?
Right, I know you wanna be brief. I just did wanna put a plug in that we have a webpage for the Elementary School Reuse Committee, so it's under the Planning Department. We have current projects, and this is one of them. So we have all, that's Council Kuzinski said we have all the meeting recordings, but we also have easy-to-read PowerPoint presentations. We have other information. We have, the draft RFP is up there right now. We do expect it to change. The committee just met today, so that was the first time we saw a full draft. But there, we have been building that, and that will be part of, you know, that'll be part of the reference package that gets moved forward. But I do appreciate what Council Kuzinski was saying about getting information soon. It is coming. You know, we, we have a steady pace that we're kind of working towards, so I just wanted to put a plug in for the webpage.
Thank you, City Planner back. I think you, Joe, I hope I see you both soon again. I'm gonna continue the communication from elected official board and committee after the full hearing. I will take a motion to take, to open fully here.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open, open fully hearing, Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Motion passes. We have tonight one transfer and two appropriations. Councilor Reese?
Yes, councilors, these are fairly easy transfers and appropriations. The first one is $53,117.85. We get this every quarter. It's to move money from the Charter Spectrum requirement that they fund our East Hampton media. We have to move it from a revenue account to a, an account where money can be spent. So this is a, something we have to do every, every three months. You'll see it again, and it gives East Hampton Media access to these funds. It was approved three to zero by the Finance Committee.
Any councilor have any question? Anyone from the public have any question or comment on this? Seeing none. Councilor Reese?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The request is for $53,117.85 to be transferred from the PEG Access Account, $53,117.85 to be transferred to the PEG Access Account, to give approval to spend from the PEG Access Receipts Reserved Account for cable-related purposes consistent with a franchise agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to make a departmental transfer of $53,117.85 to be transferred to the PEG Access Receipts Reserve Account for cable-related purpose. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Motion passes. Councilor Reese?
We have a supplemental appropriation for $6,900. This is to catch up on our actual study account for OPEB benefits. Again, it's a, a budget fix. We have unanticipated expenses and budgeting, and this will get us through to the end of the fiscal year. We're gonna see a lot of these. So I don't have anything else to say, except we passed a three to zero. We need to make sure there's enough money in this account.
Any councilor have an additional comment? You know, anyone from the public have any comment or questions about these appropriations? You don't see any? Councilor Reese?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $6,900 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to actual study account, $6,900. The amount requested for the purpose of an OPEB valuation remaining balance, unanticipated expenses in the fiscal year 2022 budgeting for valuation of city OPEB benefits.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for supplemental appropriation of $6,900 from free cash to cover the fiscal year 2022 on anticipated expenses for valuation of city OPEB benefits. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi. Motion passes. Councilor Reese?
We have another supplemental appropriation for $20,464. This is to catch up on our school liability and city liability premiums. Just to, again, to catch up for our budgeting purposes, to make sure we have enough funds to pay the remaining balance on these two liability accounts. It was approved three to zero by the Finance Committee.
Any councilors have any question? Don't see any, anyone from the public have any comment or question? Councilor Zerrit?
Just a quick question to the Finance Chair. Oh, I mean, I feel this is on the topic of OPEB as well. I know we just passed that, but these catch-up accounts, is this going to be, we're never gonna catch up, are we? This is kind of a constant process of, of having to anticipate that there's going to be appropriations for certain accounts in the city that keep getting beyond us. Is that a fair statement?
I think it is, but what I would say is the mayor's not here to defend it. She generally has, over the years, budgeted only what she felt was necessary in these accounts, and cannot, and some of these are very difficult to anticipate, increases in liability insurances, et cetera. So rather than put money in there that we may not need, she prefers to use the free cash method or other reserve accounts to catch up when we need to. And that's happening across the board with a lot of our departments.
Council Kuzinski?
I just wanted to add that although it looks like we may never catch up, and indeed, we may never catch up. With different years, there are different funding sort of, different interest rates that are achieved in excess of the predicted rate. So I think the Employee Benefit Fund will may very well be, be adjusted over time with, with the market conditions. So we may be getting more interest than we thought we would. So just to add that fact.
Thank you, Councilor Kuzinski. Any other councilor? Seeing none. Councilor Reese?
I move that the full council approve-
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars to be transferred from free cash to be transferred to the school liability account, eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, and the city liability account, twelve thousand, seventy-four dollars for the purpose for property liability insurance remaining balance, unanticipated expenses and FY twenty-two budgeting for property liability.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for supplemental application of twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars from free cash to cover the fiscal year 2022 on anticipated expenses from property liabilities. Any further discussion? See none, Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
I see Connie Denham's here.
Good to hear.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
And JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Motion passes. We'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, Barbara.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Motion passes. I will continue with the communication for elected official force and committee. Any counselor have anything they want to add? Consul, sorry.
Like a bad penny. Just a couple of things, Mr. President. As you potentially know, or if you don't, now you know. The Riverside Industries, which we all are aware of, the great services that they provide to the community. They are holding their yearly auction from April first to the eighth. This will be a hybrid format. Most of it will be online. But there will be an in-person component on April eighth from six thirty to eight. That's limited to a hundred people. So get your tickets now. Obviously, we know how good of a cause that is. And as I mentioned, the great space that they serve in our community. Piscotic Trust is coming up on their fortieth anniversary, serving our community and providing conservation services and planning. So just thank you to them. I don't know what the events are, but I was told that there are a lot of exciting events coming up for them. Their yearly plant sale, I think, is in May and they're looking for officers. So counselors who might know anyone interested in getting involved with that organization, please, please send that way. I'm sure many of you are familiar with Marty Klein is a good contact. And then as always, as I said last council meeting, and I'm sure I'll be repeating just ongoing prayers for the people who live in Ukraine. I think about my own life and my own troubles and how minuscule they are compared to what people are having to deal with there, you know, over more than a million people. Probably close to two million people at this point completely displaced in the country. Severe destruction of infrastructure, schools, museums, hospitals. I was thinking about our city government recently because the mayor of Molitopol was kidnapped. And they installed another mayor in their place and tried to force the city council to acknowledge that the city was now belonged, part of Russia. And the city council basically had the courage to say no, that's still part of the Ukraine. And just today, actually, that mayor was actually rescued from capture. I mean, there's just a million human interest stories and many of them, most of them very sad. But I just continue my prayers every day and close following of the situation and just continuing to hold the people of the Ukraine in my thoughts. Slava Ukraini.
Thank you. Consul, sorry. Any other counselor? See none. Wait. Yes, I see. Consular Rothschild.
I'm just reminding people that the farmer's market, we will have a presence again from the appointments committee and from other, and from members of, I think, the commission of disability are going to be joining us from March twenty-sixth, the next Sunday. Yep, March twenty-seventh, Sunday, March twenty-seventh, intended to, and Keltor Gomez was there this last weekend with Laura Fisher. So we want to keep having a presence out in the public and getting people involved in our committees and boards.
Thank you, Consular. Any other counselor? Consul Kuzinski.
I just wanted to ask Counselor Rothschild what the hours were on March twenty-seventh for there will be, will be a presence.
Ten, the whole time, so I think it's ten to two is the farmer's market hours.
From ten to two. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Consular. Mayor Communication, Mayor's not here. Correspondent announcement for the president, vice president of communication. We have in the agenda discuss about upcoming meetings in person, hybrid, remote. I will let the vice president to talk first and then I will add more stuff.
Thank you, Ms. President. So we actually discussed this earlier. And you know, I think all of us, well, I guess I'm assuming that all of us would like to come back into person as soon as it's safe to do so. And it seems like at this point, it probably would be safe to do so. You know, I think a couple of the questions that we talked about was, you know, are we going to be able to continue the, the interaction that we have with the public for people who aren't able to get to meetings? That's important for us. And also, you know, the question about whether a counselor who might be having symptoms would be able to participate remotely as well. And so those are the, those are the kind of cruxes that we wanted to discuss and get some, some guidance on. And I know that the president might have some more information on that, but that's kind of the discussion that we've had so far was let's get back in person and figure out a way to keep community engagement high and also keep safety a priority.
Thank you, Vice President. So this is my recommendation and this is what I'm planning to see in the future is that I want to see us at the first meeting in April, going back to the chamber. The regulations are the, I will talk to the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We have to have a forum in person. We have, at least we have five members of the council there. We prefer to have all the councils there. But if a council like the vice president stated in his comments didn't feel well that day, we will allow it until July fifteen to participate remote. Why July fifteen? Because of the exception of the, of the legal law on the governor Baker. But again, my recommendation is we should be everybody to be at the chamber. Yes, if we're going to have the ability to let the public keep participating and probably speak time in a public hearing, that will be in place. We're going to keep that. But I think it's time for us to go back for those of, in our community, that they don't have the skills, that they don't have computers, or they don't have internet. And that way they can interact with us, they can come to us. And that way I think we're going to be more accessible, fair with everybody, because now everybody can approach us in one way or the other, through emails, through calls, but in person too. And I think it's time to go back. The teachers are back, the students are back, everybody's are back, and it's time for us to go back. I will open it to the, all the counselors. I will take opinions and any comments from you guys. Any counselors? Consular Reese?
Thank you, Mr. President. I fully agree with this position. And just wanted to reiterate that if we're back in April, we need people there. We need a, it is, just to echo what President Gomez said, it's our democracy in action for us to be in person and interacting with the community. And although we are going to allow until July, well, forever, I think, the ability of our citizens to be able to come to us through Zoom or Google meets and give remote participation at public speak and public hearings. It's important to me that we have the ability to interact with our community, especially for those who do not have access to the internet. So I am very thankful that we're going back. It's been way too long. So I hope all the counselors will attempt. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Reese. Consular, silent.
Just, just quick support of going back in person. I think the statements have already been made to the effect of the benefits thereof and opportunities for interaction with the public. You know, the pandemic has offered us some opportunity to see how we can leverage technology for better engagement. And to Counselor Reese's comment, yours, Mr. President, and the vice presidents. I think it's time, it's safe, certainly if we can be out at bars and restaurants and concerts in, you know, and in schools without gathering, then I think we're fine. Obviously, you know, life is unpredictable and who knows what tomorrow will bring in terms of this horrible pandemic. Hopefully more declining numbers, but it's definitely time to get back. Certainly looking forward to seeing all your smiling faces in person. And so I'm all for it.
Thank you, Consular Rothschild.
I'm pretty much what Counselor Zaret was saying. So I agree. I want to go back. And I'm glad that we now have widened, that people have accepted technology is also a form of interacting. So hopefully we'll have a wider participation going forward.
Thank you. Consular Peak.
Yeah, so I broadly support going back. I think that, I mean, certainly, right, we've, plenty of us have been going to restaurants and what have you for a while now. The one thing I will say is when we initially were, I think, talking about this last summer prior to the Delta surge, there was some talk of maybe trying to do a trial run, like a fake meeting, where we can have some people call in. Like have some people there in person and some people participating over the phone. Maybe have a counselor call in and just basically try and break. I just think it's important to note that like, we're, like, the system that's been set up, you know, we haven't tried it yet. So I don't know if there's anyone who would want to volunteer for something like that. I don't know, President Gomez, if you'd have any interest in facilitating something like that or where the IT department is. I'm fine to go back to the first meeting in April, but I really think it would probably be a good idea for at least a handful of us, along with some people from the community and some folks from the city government, to try and jump on and just have a fake meeting for half an hour or something to just see if there's any technology problems that we don't even know we're, we have to be worrying about right now before, before we dive in. And that's, that's just my one piece of advice.
Thank you, Consular Peak. Before you, Consular Denham, I need to answer to Consular Peak. The answer to you, Counselor, is the, I'm ahead of that. We are working on it. We already tried it. Something Media was part of it. We're going to try a few times before we going back to our first meeting. So we are doing, and we're going to keep doing it. We're going to keep trying it until the first meeting because I want to be more than a hundred percent sure that it is working. So we, we're in that direction and carrying the IT department and the Something Media. We are working all together to do that. Consular Denham.
Yes, I'm fully in support. I think it's a priority for us to be inclusive and accessible. I also want to acknowledge that China and Europe currently are experiencing surges. And so I think it's important for us to always model and promote health and safety among the community. And so I just want to acknowledge that things might shift.
Thank you, Consular Denham. And I, I thank you for that comment. I just want to add, if any counsel feel they have to come to the meeting with a mask or any from the public, when I come with a mask, we're going to respect you. We're not going to make any comment. We're not going to make any faces. You know what? You are free to, you're free to do what you believe you have to do for your safety. Consular Kuzinski.
Gosh, I was glad to hear you add the last comment, Counselor Gomez. But I would certainly hope that there would be no, no comments that if a mask is a mask, it's a health issue. Whether you're masked or maskless, it really doesn't matter. So that being said, with regard to China and Europe, I hadn't heard those figures going up. But I did hear some very disconcerting news with regard to the COVID nineteen report that was put out, I believe, yesterday or today, in fact. And what they were talking about was the leading edge numbers where the actual community wastewater is tested. And that usually leads by about a week, the data in, of COVID testing. And then another period occurs and then you'll get the illnesses and the hospitalizations. Basically, the sewage testing is slightly up in Hampshire County. So I wanted to be clear about that. We should be very careful about watching those numbers. I am fully in favor of getting together. I hope that it can be done on a hybrid basis because there may be times which certain counselors, I for one, may not feel comfortable going in. Especially if there's a situation where there's a hundred and thirty people, whatever the maximum is for the rooms that we occupy. And, and that can just be an overload for many people, especially those who have our immunocompromised. And I would be very clear that we have that hybrid capacity where folks can check in by telephone, can check in by, by count, by video conferencing. So I look forward to that and I will participate in any practice sessions for this. And I would appreciate any, any new information you might have on that, President Gomez. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Kuzinski. So this is going to be my recommendation. My recommendation is go to the full council in person and wait for the, for the committees to start on main. So that way we're going to be sure that all rooms are working and we're going to have the ability to do hybrid meetings for the public. And that way we can use the chamber for the kind of the experiment, right? And I know Consular Peak say that we're going to do, and I said that, and we are working on it and we're going to keep working on it until the first meeting because I want to be more than sure that the system is working for the benefit of our constituents. Because at the end of the day, it's for their benefit. And but my recommendation is just ask the full council to go back in person and let the committees to start on main. That, that will be my recommendation. And I will take any comment for the council if you have any objections. But I think that will work perfect to the transition to going back. Consular Peak.
Just two comments. First of all, for some of you don't even know the significance of this. But for those of you who were on the council before we locked down, I have to say I am so excited for voice votes. I am so unbelievably excited for voice votes. I'm so excited not to have to go one after another to talk about opening and closing a public hearing. It's seriously, it cuts like a lot of time out of meetings. So I'm very excited for that. The other thing I would just say is I just continue to stress that, you know, we, like, let's just, let's just try and make sure that our lines of communication with the public are really open about the hybrid setup. Because while it's true that we need to be inclusive to the folks who maybe don't have access to teleconferencing equipment, internet, whatever, I would probably argue that right now in East Hampton, there are probably a lot more people who are immunocompromised or have transportation limitations or have small kids that they have to watch than there are people without a smartphone. And so I think, you know, if we're talking about the risks that we potentially run of alienating people, the population that we could alienate if the population that we could alienate if the hybrid is problematic in some way is, is pretty significant. And I'm excited to get it started. I think the best way that we can learn is by doing stuff. But let's just all be really sure to be good listeners and try and be responsive if the people are having problems with anything. Because in my experience with technology, you rarely nail things, you know, right out the gate.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Riz.
I hate to be a bearer of sad news, but the latest AG guidance says we have to have roll call votes if any counselor isn't present in the meeting. So Tom, unfortunately, until July 15th, we may be having roll call votes.
Thank you, Counselor Riz. Vice President, do you think we need to make a vote for this or we just going back?
I, I think that we can just go back. I, I mean, I would, you know, welcome to impact the input from some of the other counselors, but I feel like this is probably something we can just go ahead and do.
I'm ready to go back. So our next meeting is gonna be in person, the 50th basin, April 6th, at 6:00 PM. Okay, I will move to report of the standing committees, finance, Counselor Riz. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I was about to tell you.
I know. I saw your face. I really, I already get it. Thank you. I totally forget to present last, last meeting, the city council budget. We, I'm asking you counselors to vote tonight. We have to send it to the mayor as soon as possible because she's gonna present it to the council next meeting. And I will take the responsibility that I didn't present it on time. I was working on a few numbers and I didn't, I didn't. So I send it to the city clerk last, last week. It's in the package since last week. And I hope you take a look of it, but I will share it with you in a minute. You guys can see it. Yes, so the mayor this year, she was asking for a 1%, 2%, 3% increase. And I, and I did, I increased it. First, I'm gonna start with the council salary jumped from thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty to thirty-five, thirty-six thousand to five hundred. Because last, last term, we increased the council president's salary from four thousand to forty-five hundred. That's that increase, nothing they're gonna change there. The permanent clerk will state this, we increased it for the last, the last ordinance, we increased the stipend for the city council clerk from thirty-two, forty to five thousand. So that's why you see five thousand each of 1%, 2%, 3%, because that's a stipend. Then for advertising, that's the only increase that we have for 1%, 2%, 1%, 2%, and 3%. And I add a line for training of nine hundred dollars. Before any councilor will ask why only nine hundred dollars, we never, at, at least I don't remember, we have any amount of money in that line since I'm being a counselor. Nine hundred, I think, is a good number to start. Why nine hundred? We will cover at least a hundred dollar for each counselor when we'll take some training. We have some policies and guidance, how you're gonna present that to the council president, that way we can reimburse you up to a hundred dollar. And I'm encourage you guys, when we get this back from the mayor, we have the nine hundred dollars to use it for the benefit of us and to the constituents. That will end with three different amount of number. And then the mayor will decide which one it's gonna include in at the full, the budget for the 2023 for 1%, 2%, or 3%. I hope she choose the 3%. But that's the numbers they are presenting to you. And I'm, I'm, I'm really wanna know if any want to have a question. And I hope we can vote tonight so that we, we can send that as soon as possible to the mayor. Counselor Riz.
I just want to compliment the president because the nine hundred dollars is something we've been trying to get. And I believe, given that the mayor's asked for 3%, we might actually get that this year. I also recommend the 3% increase on the purchase of services because that's where we spend money on advertising and we've had to increase that the last, this term. I know we've increased it maybe twice. So why not go for the full 3%? So, Mr. President, I think, are you recommending the 44, 010 figure?
That's correct, Counselor Riz.
Pardon me? That's correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselor? I don't see anyone. If, if no one is using the digital one, I cannot see everybody now because I'm sharing a document, so. I don't see any. Counselor Riz, do you, do you want to make the motion? Are you muted? You're muted.
Sorry, I move that the full council approved forty-four thousand, zero, one, zero point six three as presented by Counselor Gomez to be the council's request to the mayor for the 2023 fiscal year budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 3% increase for forty-four thousand, ten dollars, sixty-three cents for the fiscal year 2023 for the city council budget. Any further discussion? Do you know, Barbara?
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you, Counselors, for voting for this budget this night, tonight. This was really important. Report of the standing committees, finance, Counselor Riz.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will meet again next week, the 23rd at 5:00 PM. We have a number of items on our new business that we'll look into. We're gonna wait on the stipends and salaries for elected officials for a future time. At this time, though, I would like to bring forward, because it did not require a public hearing, the request for the retirement board to increase the COLA base by two thousand dollars from fourteen to sixteen thousand. This was last done in 2015. This increase will give especially our retirees who do not have the higher retirement accounts a better access to COLA increases. And I, I just wanted to make, before I ask Ms. Wood to do a better job explaining what the COLA increase means to the full council, I just wanted to compliment the retirement board. We are probably the highest funded ratio for retirement in the state. We have a funded seventy-four point nine percent funded ratio for our retirement. What that means is we are in excellent condition in our retirement accounts. We got a 7% assumed rate of return and our unfunded liability has been reduced and we should be fully funded by 2032. A lot of that is complicated, but let me just say that there's a lot of cities and towns in the city, in this state that are not nearly as capable, as funded as we are. So I want to compliment the retirement board for their investment strategies and everything they're doing to keep this retirement going. So if it pleases the president, I'd like to ask Ms. Wood to explain what a COLA increase is in a better way than I have.
Thank you, Counselor Riz. Wood.
Thank you, President Amar. And then risk the legislation in the city council. Yes, so basically, every board has the ability to raise on the COLA, which is the 3%. And every year, we approve a 3% COLA raise for all our retirees. That being said, only a certain portion of the retirees' total allowance is subject to COLA. So we're asking to increase it to sixteen thousand from fourteen thousand. So the maximum benefit of the sixteen thousand would be four hundred and eighty dollars a year, which is the 3% times the sixteen thousand. So anybody underneath that would get the 3% up to sixteen would be the maximum benefit for anybody over that amount. And that would equate to about sixty dollars a month, excuse me, a difference of the forty dollars monthly to each retiree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Riz.
I will make a motion, but let me just say that one of our questions was, does this impact the FY23 budget? And it does not. It impacts the FY24 budget, whatever, what our assessment will be, but it's a minor amount. And Counselor Peak or Counselor Denham, if you can remember, I think it's in the thirty thousand dollar range for next year. Am I correct in that statement? I, I lost my notes on this, but I believe it's a very low impact on the budget. And it does not impact the fiscal year 23 assessment. We pay a considerable amount of money towards the retirement retirees every year.
Counselor Kuzinski.
I just had a quick question for Ms. Wood. If you wouldn't mind, the cap of sixteen, fourteen or sixteen thousand dollars, if I understand it correctly, means that if someone has a retirement of eighteen or twenty or twenty-two thousand dollars or twenty-five, the COLA adjustment is not given on the difference between their pension and sixteen thousand. It's given only from, on the sixteen, the first sixteen thousand dollars at 3%. Is that correct?
That's correct, on the monthly retirement allowance.
On the monthly retirement allowance. So I mean, I don't know if, if folks can hear that, but that's really a COLA based on only, for many people, a portion of their, of their, of their income. And that's, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that the, the state hasn't changed that, but I'm grateful that we have the opportunity, especially for those who have salaries of, of, let's say, sixteen thousand or fifteen thousand or even seventeen thousand, to be able to up this. And I am definitely in favor. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Kuzinski. Any other counselor? I just want to add before Counselor Riz that the inflation is over 7%. And anything we can do to help the people who worked for our community in the past is, to me, is really important. So this is, 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 to me, it's necessary, especially in these days, the prices of everything is to the roof. So I'm more than happy to say yes to this, to this increase. Counselor Riz.
I'll make a motion then. I move to approve the acceptance of, of the amended section 103J of chapter 32 pertaining to an increase in the maximum base amount on which the cost of living adjustment is calculated, increasing this amount by two thousand dollars to sixteen thousand dollars, as voted by the East Hampton Contributory Retirement Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the request for the retirement board to increase the COLA base by two thousand to sixteen thousand. Any further discussion? Do you know, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild. Hi. Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Motion passes, Counselor Riz.
Mr. President, that concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Riz. Public safety, Counselor Silver.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met in the interim since our, my last report. We are meeting next week, the 24th at 6:00 PM. That meeting will specifically be to go over the ordinance review committees file reports that pertains to public safety items as well as the discussion of electric speed monitoring ties. I've asked the chief of police if he could attend that meeting. Our next meeting after that is, we're sticking with the first Tuesday of every month, which is April 5th at 6:00 PM. I've asked the director of DPW to attend and present for a quarterly meeting. I've also requested figures from them regarding estimates for the traffic light at Main and South, so we can have some firm numbers. And I believe I'll probably need to set another meeting in April as well for some other stuff that I'll be submitting, an agenda item I'll be submitting at the next meeting. And it appears that all of our items are in order. And this concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Silver. Start it. Appointment, Counselor Rothschild.
Hi, Counselor Gomez. So we met on last Wednesday, which was the ninth. So I want to first make a motion to confirm the city clerk and assistant city clerk positions. We voted three to zero to confirm them. I'm very grateful for their contributions in the city. I'm glad that they are continuing. So I'd like to make a motion to confirm Mayor Barbara Lombard, a city clerk with a term expiration March 31st, 2025, and Mary Ann Keese as assistant city clerk with a term expiration March 31st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the appointment of Barbara Lombard, Mary Ann Keese, expiration day, March 31st. Any further discussion? Do you know, Barbara?
Owen Zerrit.
Absolutely, yes.
Connie Denham.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Rothschild.
Okay, so we voted three to zero on all the mayoral appointments in front of us. So that was Kim Jamrock McQuade, and he was being appointed to the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership and Kate Bennigan White to the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership. Neither of them came, but they emailed us answers to our questions and they both are passionate about fair housing. And Kim is a lifelong East Hampton resident and knows a lot about social media marketing and is looking forward to helping kind of bring those skills and tools to the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership to get the word out and opportunities. And Kate Bennigan White has a long history in mental health work and sees where different life circumstances, circumstances intersect and rise a need for affordable housing. So we're lucky to have those two joining our Affordable Fair Housing Partnership. And there's Marla Solomon is joining the Community Relations Committee. She also came and spoke with us. And we also got endorsement from one of the chairs of that committee. Ruth Jenison is joining the Housing Authority and she is a union member. She's filling the union seat. She's worked with the MTA many years. And Mary Church, the other Housing Authority member, will be joining as a resident of the, of housing. James Ramsey and James Hickson, we did not meet, but we still voted three to zero to confirm them to the Parks and Rec and Veterans Council. So I'm gonna make a blanket motion. So I'd like to make a motion.
Counselor Rothschild, I just want to recommend, and I know Barbara is gonna kill me, but I would recommend having different motions because we have different dates.
I was just gonna read them all, but if you want me to, I was gonna read all the dates and want, go ahead. But whatever you guys want to do.
Yes, can you at least leave alone the 12th, 31st, 2022? So that way we can explain it when you make the motion. Keep those, those two.
Want me to explain it now? I can explain.
If you, if you can explain it now.
I can explain now. Those two, the Community Relations Committee and the Housing Authority seat are filling the terms of other members. So when they, that's why their term isn't as long. So of members that left. So when they get to the end of that term, they will have the opportunity to be reappointed for a full term.
That's good. That's better.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to confirm Kim Jamrock McQuade to the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to confirm Kim Jamrog McQuade to the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership and Kate Bennigan White to the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership with term expirations twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, and Marla Solomon to the Community Relations Committee with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, and Ruth Jensen to the Housing Authority with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, Mary Church to Housing Authority with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, James Ramsey to the Parks and Rec Commission with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, and James Hickson to the Veterans Council with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve seven appointments. Any further discussion? You know, Barbara.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Uh, I'm abstaining from this vote.
Okay.
Motion passes, um, consider a roadchild.
Our next meeting is Wednesday, March twenty-third at four P M.
Thank you.
This concludes.
Or then it's going to other.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, ordinance has been busy lately. Um, we, on March third, uh, we met and discussed the vacant storefront ordinance, and I feel like we had a, uh, really productive discussion with the E D I C members, um, and were able to have a nice, um, kind of work through, uh, to discuss some of the, uh, challenges and some possible solutions. So I think that was really, uh, beneficial. Um, we also met on the eighth with the planning board to discuss our, um, affordable housing overlay district. Um, and we're still waiting on some information from the state. So that is, uh, a meeting that we have, um, continued. So we are going to continue to meet with the planning board. Uh, we have continued that meeting until the twenty-ninth. So March twenty-ninth, six P M, uh, is going to be the continuation with the planning board. Uh, we also have a meeting on the twenty-second at six P M. Uh, we're going to discuss, uh, the new item on our agenda, um, which is, uh, the, the request to amend the pay plan to add a position of Executive Assistant and some of the other items that we have on our agenda as well. Uh, and so thus concludes.
Thank you, Council Derby. Uh, property, we don't have anything, I believe. Rules wouldn't have anything, I believe. Idaho Committee, uh, because of Kuzinski wouldn't have any report tonight, right?
Uh, just to note that, uh, the meeting that was, uh, for March fourteen has been switched to March twenty-first at six P M. So there will be a senior tax work off committee on the twenty-first Monday.
Yeah, thank you, Council Kuzinski. New businesses, uh, Councilor Vice President Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually scrolling to find the new appointments. So I'll be there momentarily, so I can move the new appointments to Appointment Subcommittee. Um, because I do believe I need to read those appointments and I'm, there's a lot of minutes here to get through. So, uh, let me just, uh, unless it pleases the President to just move the two appointments. Oh, you have them there. Ah, thank you so much. So I'd like to move, uh, the mayoral appointments to the Appointment Subcommittee. Uh, Robert Wild for the Commission on Disability, uh, Term Expiration on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, and, uh, Richard Reche, uh, Veterans Council with that term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four in the form of a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to move those two appointment to the appointments committee. Any further discussion? Do you know, Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild. Hi. Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Motion passes, Vice President.
Uh, I'd like to move the fiscal year twenty-three city council budget proposal.
No.
Uh, we already, we already did that. Um, and I think probably at this point, it makes sense to turn this over to Counselor Risk because we have a resolution that I believe we're going to be taking action on tonight. So I'd like to, um, bring this over to Counselor Risk.
Well, first of all, let me say that this is Council Denham's, uh, work and research. I agreed to help her with, uh, um, process, but I want to compliment Council Denham for the hard work on this. If, unless the council objects, we are going to try and move this this evening because apparently it's going to come out of committee at the legislature and I'll now ask Council Denham to introduce it. Um, but because I think she's, uh, fallen, I will read the resolution. Council Denham or Council, I mean, President Gomez, if it pleases you.
I'm okay with that.
Connie.
Yes, uh, please.
Ultra Denham.
Yes, do you want me to, I can't read that. Sorry, I'm on my phone.
No, I'll read it, but you, you wanted to, uh, give some background, I assume?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, there was a little bit of a gap. Uh, yes, so, um, this is the Debt Free Future Act that is in front of, um, it's in the Higher Ed Committee right now in the state legislature. And essentially, the Debt Free Future Act would provide free public higher education, uh, to students, in-state students in Massachusetts, as well as those students who are Pell eligible. It will provide grant money, um, to, uh, to those students to cover cost of living, uh, so including housing, uh, books, uh, food, et cetera. And I think that this is really an importance, uh, it'd be important for us to support this, uh, in part because forty-one percent of, um, East Hampton youth are, uh, designated economically disadvantaged. Um, and so that has an impact on our community. Uh, we also talk a lot about inclusion, equity, access, and this would have a huge impact for both women and communities of color that are impacted by this. And so I strongly encourage folks to support this. Um, I outlined in the resolution as well as in the, uh, initial, uh, the cover letter of, of this, um, just all the various reasons why this is significant. I think we're taking advantage of students' resiliency, uh, as well as our mental health, and I think that we have to get back to, um, thinking of education as something that benefits, uh, our community, not just individuals. And so I, I hope you'll support it.
Thank you, Council Denham. Council Rest.
Uh, Mr. President, do you want to take questions first, or do you want me to read the resolutions?
Uh, any, uh, thank you, Council Rest. Any councilor have any questions? I don't see any.
Oh, you have two hands up, sir.
I don't, uh, yes, I'm, I'm, because I'm sharing the document now, I can see if you don't use the digital one.
Okay, um, so this is Counselor Riley.
Counselor Riley.
So, um, I just want to say that I'm enthusiastically supporting this. Um, I feel like this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity um, to create equity in higher education. Um, I wish that things like this had existed um, for my generation, um, and the fact that we are able to do this for future generations, um, is very meaningful. So, um, thank you, Counselor Denham, for, uh, taking the initiative on this. I'm very happy to support it.
Thank you, Council Riley, Council of Sarah.
Uh, certainly a quick thank you for, uh, Council Denham for bringing this forward and for Counselor Rest for, um, using his experience um, to support this. Um, when, is there an anticipated vote, uh, on this bill? Do we have a timeframe?
Um, so we're, oh.
Yeah, I just want to recognize you because one of the, one of the complaints from the, um, from the constituents and from the reporters is when we talk like that, is they don't know who's talking, and that's what I prefer to recognize before you guys, uh, any councilor talk, because of them.
Sorry about that. Um, yes, so it's in committee now, and the last day to bring it out of committee is April fourth.
Thank you. Any other councilor? I'm going back and forth. I don't see any. Council Rest.
Mr. President, may I share my screen because that way I can see it better and I can scroll.
You can do it, Council Rest.
Everybody seeing this?
Not yet.
No?
Now.
Yes, okay, okay. You don't see it, Council? President Gomez, do you see?
As I, I see it, yeah.
Okay.
Before you start reading, I just want to be sure all the councilor can see it.
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, Council Rest.
Whereas it has come to the attention of the City Council that the Joint Community Committee on Higher Education is considering H one three three nine, uh, and Senate eight two nine, an act to guarantee debt-free public higher education. And whereas while the federal government has the authority to cancel, all outstanding debt state legislatures have the ability to prevent future debts. And whereas since fiscal year zero one, per student spending on public higher education has been cut by thirty-two percent, and state scholarship spending has also been cut by thirty-two percent, increasing the burden on students and their families who now pay more than fifty percent of total public college revenue across the Commonwealth's Community Colleges, State University and Matt, excuse me, Mr. President, and UMass campuses. And whereas student debt in Massachusetts is disproportionately a public college problem as public college students graduate with almost equivalent dollars of student debt as private college graduates and more public college students graduate with debt in Massachusetts than private college students. And whereas in Massachusetts in two thousand seventeen, the average cost of attendance at public colleges accounts for an average of only twenty percent, twenty-one percent of white household income, but accounts for thirty-eight percent of black household income and forty-three percent of Latinx household income. And whereas women hold nearly two-thirds of the country's student loan debt, which totals one point seven trillion dollars, and women are often forced to pay back their student loans at a slower rate than men due to the gender pay gap, which can result in women paying more than men overall uh, for their right to learn. And whereas that the City Council go on record enthusiastic support of House one three three nine and Senate eight two nine, an act to guarantee debt-free public higher education, and in urging the Joint Committee on Higher Education to advance the bill as quickly as possible, the act is a systemic solution to the related crisis of college unaffordability and student loan debt, which will guarantee tuition and fees free public college and award cost of living grant money to low-income families to eliminate the need to borrow for housing, transportation, childcare, et cetera. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Hampton City Council offers its support for House one three three nine and Senate eight two nine, an act to guarantee debt-free public higher education, and that we continue to elevate the voices of students and families living with the burden of student debt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, um, to accept and approve the resolution to the Debt Free Future Act. Any further discussion? See you know, Barbara.
Uh, Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Motion passes. Before going to the Mr. Vice President, I just want to, um, ask the counselor, the Barbara is not going to be at the office Monday. She will send, um, a, a few documents tomorrow morning, and I will please ask you to send it as soon as possible, uh, Vice President Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we also have a proposed resolution from Counselors Zara and Riley on general, gender-neutral designation. I would like to move that that be sent to Rules and Government Relations.
Second. We have a motion and a second to move the resolution from Council of Sarah and Riley about the gender no- neutral designation, uh, to the Rules, uh, Committee. Any further discussion? See you know, Barbara.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kuzinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to our Finance Chair, uh, Counsel Rest for the first reading of these appropriations and transfer.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Vice President. I have nine, uh, transfers and appropriations. And I just want to tell the council that I will be setting a public hearing for our next meeting, but all of these particular um, financial matters are not controversial, and I believe although that public hearing will look long, uh, I've inquired of the President and we believe that this will be appropriate. It has always been my policy to try to get the money in the hands of our department heads as quickly as possible, and it can't be spent until we approve it. So at the end of my reading of all of these, uh, documents, I will be moving them to finance and for public hearing. The first one is an interdepartmental transfer. The amount is three thousand dollars to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, three thousand dollars, to be transferred to recycling, three thousand. This appropriation will fund the disposal of stockpile of obsolete and non-functioning computers, monitors, radio equipment, and associated batteries. This stockpile is a result of multiple communication and technology upgrades that have been completed over the last several years at City Hall and the Public Safety Complex. These items must be securely and properly disposed of. The next is a supplemental appropriation for thirty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars to be transferred from the Cannabis Stabilization Account, thirty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars to be transferred to the Fiscal Year Twenty-two Professional Services Public Safety Account, thirty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars for the following purpose in conjunction with the Planning Department. The Department of Public Works is working to make pedestrian safety improvements on Holyoke Street at the intersections with East Green and Allen Streets. In order for upgrades or improvements to take place at these intersections, design and survey work must be completed. This appropriation will fund completion of the necessary survey and design to move forward with pedestrian safety and improvements at these locations. The next appropriation is, the amount of ten thousand dollars is to be transferred from free cash, ten thousand dollars, to be transferred to the Revenue Electric Bike Revolving Account, eight thousand dollars, and the Revenue E V Charging and Bike Department Revolving Account, two thousand dollars. This appropriation will fund the continued operation of electric vehicle charging and valley bike share locations at multiple locations in the city. Costs associated with the operation of these stations include utility bills, maintenance, and membership agreements. The next is a supplemental appropriation. The amount is twenty-five thousand dollars to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings, twenty-five thousand dollars, to be transferred to the FY twenty-two N P D E S Permit Compliance, twenty-five thousand dollars. For the purpose of the Department of Public Works needs to enlist consulting services to assist in compliance with changes to our wastewater treatment plant national pollution discharge illumination system permit. This appropriation will also fund compliance assistance with new mass D E P regulations regarding public notification in the event of sanitary sewer overflow. The next is a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred to the FY twenty-two Professional Service Headworks Structural Account, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund a structural evaluation of the wastewater treatment plant headworks building and evaluation of the fire code compliance options to safety, safely store sodium hydrochloride at the wastewater treatment plant. Attending to these issues was noted as a priority in the two thousand eighteen Integrated Water Resource Management Plan. Excuse me a moment, Mr. President. The next is a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is fifty-eight thousand dollars to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings, fifty-eight thousand dollars to be transferred to the FY twenty-two Pump Station Improvement Account, fifty-eight thousand dollars for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the design of repairs and upgrades at the Lovefield Street Wastewater Pumping Station. This design will include plans for replacement of the discharged piping air release valve and development of bypass pumping connections to allow for larger repairs to be completed on this station in the future. The next is a supplemental appropriation of one hundred and eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be transferred from free cash, one hundred and eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be transferred to the F Y twenty-two F five fifty Dump Truck Account, one hundred and eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This appropriation will fund the replacement of Highway Division Truck sixty-one. This vehicle is a two thousand eight Ford F four fifty with approximately one hundred thousand miles. We need to begin phasing this truck out of snow and dally operations. It could take eighteen months before this is completed. Next is a supplemental appropriation of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings, one hundred and twenty thousand to be transferred to the F Y twenty-two Lowhead and Pines Pump Removal, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the following purpose. Pumps at the Hendrick Street Water Treatment Facility need to be removed, inspected, and repaired as necessary. New mechanical seals need to be installed once the pumps are returned to service. And communication systems between Hendrick Street Treatment Facility and remote locations need to be updated. The next is a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount request from Enterprise Retained Earnings to be transferred to the F Y twenty-two Combo Truck Storage Account, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the following purpose. This appropriation will find an addition to the Sewer Division Garage. This addition will allow for proper storage and an extended service life of the Sewer Division's vacuum flush combination truck. It will also allow for reduced response time during sewer system emergencies. The next is a one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollar request to be appropriated from the C P A Undesignated Fund, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to be appropriated to the Ward Avenue Rail Trail Land Acquisition Account, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The amounts requested will be for the following purpose: For the acquisition of real property, a portion of land located at seventeen Ward Avenue in order to create a new rail trail connection to Park Street. Mr. President, I move the aforementioned nine items to the Finance Committee for review and to set a public hearing on April sixth in council chambers at six fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to send to the Finance Committee one time per hour patient and to set a public hearing at fifty pence on the chamber, convert, the chamber at six fifteen, April sixth. Any further discussion? You know, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
J P Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak? Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion pauses. Look like we do everything in the agenda, and I will see you, everybody. After the motion to adjourn, I will see you, everybody, fifty pence.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn, Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
J P Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion pauses. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Take care.
Night.
Thanks, everybody. Take.